And for your commitment to education. Let's use this gathering as an opportunity to strengthen our bonds, make our voices heard, and work together to shape the future of education in our district. Now, before we begin with the questions and stories, I'd like to invite Andrea Sisneros up to the stage for roll call.
Thank you, Memory and Xander. Welcome, everyone. Let's find out what institutions are in the room tonight. When you hear your institution, let's make some noise. First, I want to start with the member institutions of Cal-Radins or the Collins Good represented here tonight. Community of Grace Presbyterian Church. May Colorado. Alcentro Humanity. Black Parent Network. Pedrass Presbyterian. Denver Coniferant Teachers Association. United Methodist of Fort Collins. Colorado Education Association. And last, but certainly not least, Jeffco Education.
Great Education Colorado.
Great Education Colorado.
Great Education. CCG has planned this action alongside an ally who I hope is soon to be a member. I want to give a special shout out to Jeffco Food Policy Council. I believe that's all, right? Did I miss anybody?
Do you have an action?
That's me. You guys have tried one of making it away safe. And I think that is it, right? I appreciate you all. Thank you for your time. And Andrea. Tonight, we will hear stories from Jefferson County parents, a bus driver, and a para educator that relate to our agenda. Please join me in welcoming them as they come. And I'm asking that you please hold your applause until all the stories have been told.
Hello, my name is Esther Caldera. I am a leader of the Jefferson County Food Policy Council. I have six children who have attended Edgewater area schools. And currently, my youngest daughter is a senior at Jefferson Junior Senior High School. My grandson is a kindergarten at Edgewater Elementary. The reason I wanted to be a part of this healthy and culturally inclusive pilot was because throughout the 20 years that I have been involved as a volunteer in schools, I've seen how school cafeterias raise challenges in making lunch a moment of joy, inclusion, and nutrition. Also, because my children have always complained about poorly heated foods, poor quality processed food, a lot of food waste, and above all, always rotating the same food during the month. Now that the legislation has passed for healthy and local food for everyone, I feel that our Edgewater area pilot plan will serve as a guide to begin expanding healthy, local food styles for Jefferson County.
Hi, my name is Alyssa Carrillo. I'm a leader of the Jefferson County Food Policy Council and the School Food Pilot Plan. I have three children who are in Jefferson High School, one is in Edgewater Elementary School. My kids are not eating at school because they don't like the food, also they don't have enough time to eat. Most of the time, they have long lines waiting to get food because the patient is short-stacked. Last week, I picked up my son from school, and he only had two chips of that. Unfortunately, this is really common at school. And now I find out that the district is making nearly $6 million by manipulating my kids, your kids, to buy junk food. That's nearly $6 million. The district seems to care more about making money instead of nourishing their mind and body. Is this what we want for our kids?
No.
Let's do something about it.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Trevor Burn. And I am the president of Jefferson County Transportation Association, a leader with JESPA and CCG. But first and foremost, I am a bus driver, and I love my job. What's interesting here tonight is the looming issue of increased outsourcing. Rideshare companies like HopSkipDrive, similar to Uber for students, are being used to transport our students due to staffing crisis created by low wages and subpar health benefits and improper hiring practices. My concern is about our jobs. But my concerns about outsourcing revolve, first and foremost, about our student safety. I just witnessed a car service letting an autistic student out of their vehicle without escorting or handing them off to a para educator. I know this student, and he was a runner. And I was scared. Luckily, I was able to jump off my bus and intervene. Parents have called their terminal terrified because these companies have left their children, and they have no idea where they are, meaning we have to go rescue them. All of our drivers are rigorously trained on how to safely transport students, particularly students with special physical, medical, and emotional needs. The drivers viewed by those companies receive none of that training, and it's not clear how parents can hold them accountable if something happens to these students. In 2022, we spent $4.5 million outsourcing to three big companies. This is over 40% of the total cost the district spends in driver's wages in Jeffco. That's $4.5 million of our taxes going to these unaccountable companies. How much longer will we allow the district to gamble the lives of our students before we say no more?
Hello, my name is Eileen Wallmeyer. I'm a para educator in a special needs classroom at Aurora West, a member of JESPA and a leader for the CCG. I wanted to tell you about a time when our program was short-stacked. Last May, we started our day like every other day, when all of a sudden, the inner calm went off with an announcement locked down out of sight. Our kids were nervous and scared. The teacher and two of us para went into action. One got the kids to the back of the room. The other started turning off lights in the music. I had to run out in the hallway by myself due to being understaffed to get our non-verbal student who loved the clock and didn't want to come in the classroom. As I ran towards her, I was terrified and listening for screams and gunshots, but at the same time wondering, how am I, this five-foot-nothing para, wanting to get this bigger-than-me student back in that classroom? While constantly scared that at any moment, a reactive shooter could have come around that corner. During the situation, all I could think about is how understaffed we are and how are the three of us going to protect and going to get these eight highly-needs students to safety? Luckily, it ended up being a false alarm. But those questions are in my mind every day we are understaffed. And I just keep praying that nothing happens. Thank you.
Thank you all for the stories. Appreciate you taking the time and the courage to come here and share with us what's in mind. Now, I would like to invite the candidates up to the stage to respond to our proposals. You've got your names on the chair. It's recorded. It'll be wonderful. So for this next portion of the evening, we ask that the candidates be genuine as well as be civil. We've met with each of you before tonight and have made each of you aware of the format. Also, we've shared the questions with each of you as well as how important it is for our members here tonight to receive yes or no answers. Our goal is to clearly hear where you stand on our issues. To start, each of you will have 90 seconds for an opening statement. Then we'll be asking seven questions in total, two at a time. After each group of two questions, you will have 60 seconds to elaborate on your answers. You will then have 60 seconds for a closing statement. I want to thank Rich Van Tell, sitting right here in the front row, for being timekeeper this evening. He will hold up and wave a cool little JESPA red towel when you kind of stuff. And so I'd like to now begin with opening statements.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for coming. My name's Michelle Appelby. I'm a candidate in District 3. And I'm a mom, I'm a professional, and I'm a lifelong supporter of public education. And I'm guided by three priorities. The first is ensuring we have strong, thriving public schools. The second is making safety a part of our student experience. And the third is building trust with other transparency. And so I support access to strong, thriving public schools in every neighborhood across our district. I believe every child deserves an education that ignites their curiosity, responds to their learning style, and engages them for whatever path they choose to pursue. And I know every kid's different. At my house, I have a 16, an 8, and a 3-year-old. And as you can imagine, we have a lot of different things going on in the house. So I believe we take a focus on student achievement and growth. We take what's working in the district and we replicate it. And then we also really listen to our communities, like you ultimately. We need to understand your needs, the challenges. We need to listen to our educators. We need to listen to our students and our families. So I will settle for nothing less than safe and secure schools because I believe learning happens best when we all feel safe and have a sense of belonging. I co-parent with an educator. My oldest is my stepson. And his mom and I have the good fortune of becoming close friends over the years. She's really opened my eyes to what it means to be a kindergarten teacher in a title school in our district. It's not easy. I also believe that we really need to lean into engagement and rebuild some trust. Engagement, feedback, and data-informed decisions. My career, and I'm really happy to be here and I'll finish the growth.
Thank you for having us here tonight. My name's Amara Hillbrand. And I'm here, kind of unlikely candidate. I think I turned in my petition at the last minute. I feel called to do this. The opportunity came to me in July, and I said no a few times, but my faith is really important to me. I prayed on it, and I'm here. I'm also a mother of two. I have a 9th grader at Green Mountain, and I have a 6th grader at Notre Dame. So I've got one in public and one in private school. I am a civil engineer, and I'm a small business owner as well. And I believe very much in parents' need to be instrumental in education, have a say in curriculum, have a say in choice, the choice of school, and in budget transparency. When we moved to Jeffco, I've been in Colorado 22 years. But when we moved to Jeffco 12 years ago, it was largely, in part, because of the choice of schools and because the reputation of the schools. And so I feel like that has gone down in the years that we've been here, for the 20 years we've been here. And I have significant concerns about where we are with achievement, where we are with budget, and where we are with mental health. And, is that it?
Just doing its job.
Hola, hello. I'm Erin Kenworthy. And I use she/her, A.L. pronouns. I'm a full-time working parent with two students in Jeffco schools. And today, my youngest child, Bryce, turns seven. Happy birthday to my Bryce. I'm a fourth-generation educator from a family of public educators under Todd High School World in New York. I've been here for five years before leaving my own public school classroom to be a substitute teacher, a job readiness educator for adults who are receiving state and federal assistance. And now I'm a religious educator at a unitary universal congregation on Castle Hill. Public education and public service are central to who I am, whether it's in public schools or community-based nonprofits. I'm running for the district four seat on the board of ed because I'm invested in the strength and success of Jefferson County public schools. I'm a union and organized member supporter. I'm endorsed by the JCEA and CDA. And I've spent the last four years involved in both school and district level accountability committees. I am qualified to serve our Jeffco community because I'm a collaborative leader, goes experience in partnering with and supporting diverse communities of color, including immigrants who are seeking sanctuary downtown, non-native English speakers differently abled and LGBTQIA+, individuals from a variety of socioeconomic experience. I'm not here to tell you what you want to hear. I'm here to tell you what I'm going to do. Thanks for having me.
So I'm gonna try not to be emotional, but it's hard not to be when I see the families and students that we've worked with over the last 11 years. So my story actually starts in this room. We moved to Edgewater 11 years ago, and I was pastor of Mount Aira Christian Church in this room. And we enrolled our daughters in Lumbury Elementary School because we wanted our daughters to grow up in an environment with students that spoke different languages, had different life experiences than them. The main reason I'm running is for the students and the families and the paras that I see in the audience tonight. For 30 years, our district has done enough to provide the right opportunities for students, families, and educators in Title I buildings in East Central Jeffco. We have to do better. Our students deserve it. Our parents deserve it. You heard the power of our Latina moms. They need to be heard. And we need to work together because the district has some pretty big challenges over the next four years. And we need a leader that is experienced to bring the community together, experienced working with Title I areas, and experienced with helping get the right resources to students that need it and that deserve a great education. So thanks for being here tonight.
Good evening. I'm gonna take just a couple of seconds. This is so inspiring. This is how we change what's happening in our district. It's rooms built like this. So number one, thank you for being here. My name is Thomas Whiggy. I'm gonna skip ahead to what I do professionally because it ties to, I want to honor you really quickly. I'm a campus, I'm a college president at Hong Kong Career College over in Aurora. And just today, as I was walking into my campus, there were some things not done, including out in the parking lot. So I'd like to read one of my favorite quotes by Mr. Martin Luther King, one of my heroes, that I related to and I just feel with all the workers here today. "If it falls on your luck to be a street sweeper, sweep the streets like Michelangelo painted pictures, like Shakespeare wrote poetry, like Beethoven composed music. Sweep streets so well that all the hosts of heaven and earth will have pause and say, 'Here lived a great street sweeper who swept his job well.'" I honor anyone who does their job and gives their all. We had a chance to meet with the group before, and I know that that is this group here. I am running for a school board director concerned about the money that we spend that does not get to the lowest levels of people working in the classroom as paras, on buses, in cafeterias, and on the blacktop. We have the money. We can spend it a lot better. I'm concerned about the trust that we've lost and work here for our children's education academic achievements. Thank you, candidates. Okay, we are gonna start with our first round of questions here.
Hello?
Hello? Hello? My name's Alyssa Carrillo. I work with, I am with Jefferson County Food Policy Council. Phase two of Healthy School Meals for All include creating a parent-student advisory for and state funding for local kitchen equipment and staff wages. If selected, will you support the CCG proposal to opt into phase two of Healthy Meals for All? Sound okay?
We're gonna do two questions at a time, and then you get 60 seconds to respond.
Two at a time, okay. So I'm doing, yes, I'm doing both questions now?
That was one question.
That was one question. So we're gonna do one question, then come back with a second question. You get 60 seconds.
So I'm just saying yes or no?
That we're now, yeah?
Yes.
Hello, I'm Ari DeChavez. I'm part of Latin American Action in Washington, D.C. If selected, will you support the CCG proposal to give students a full 20 minutes to eat while you're on the rag student system and to classify your time as instructional time?
Is that okay? Yes. Kenworthy? Yes. That's your name? See? That's for you? Yes.
All right, now you each have 60 seconds to respond.
All right, we've got this figured out now. Thank you for helping me with these questions. That's really fun. We can get that out.
I absolutely support opting into phase two of the Healthy School Meals for All program. I think this is a really great opportunity for us. And I love the creation of the advisory board. Anytime we can bring engagement from families directly into what the district is doing, it's really, really powerful, and it makes a big impact. And then on the second one, I can turn this right there. I absolutely support giving enough time. This is something my kids have struggled with. I hear all the time, the lunch comes home when I make lunch, and there's half a lunch in there. Let enough time to eat it. And so I've heard this from my own kids. I'm very curious about understanding what the dynamic is and how we would make it instructional time. So I'm really curious to work with CCG, but I really look forward to partnership and understanding more. And I appreciate this one very much.
So I tried to read through House Bill 221414 today. I'm not an attorney, but I love what's in there about healthy meals, locally sourced, the locally sourced intent. And, you know, I'm sure you all are paying attention. Bioengineered food has blown up, and it's not good for us, right? And I know one thing we're doing in the district, which is, I think, amazing, is at Warren Tech, I think it's called Acres, Three Acres, where they're growing food themselves. And so I would love to see more of that in Colorado. As far as the 45, well, 20 minutes, I was just gonna tell you. I grew up in Ohio. We had 45 minutes to eat. I was in public school. I had a great education. So I'm not sure how 20 minutes works. My daughter does the same. She comes home and says, some people don't even get out of the line. So they don't eat, right? And that's incredible. Need to eat to learn.
So I do support the CCG proposal for opting into phase two of the Healthy School Meals for All. And I'm excited by the opportunity for increased student, in particular, family and community engagement that can happen with an advisory board. And for the second one, I'm applying to support the CCG proposal to give students full 20 minutes to eat, classify this as instructional time. And as a trained educational instructor, I would like to learn more about this. I would like to look at the ways that we can ensure that our students across all of our schools have enough time to get and eat their lunch.
So the last question, I forgot to say my name. Joel Doosworth. I am in favor of the first one. The coolest part of the Edgewater area pilot has been Latina moms and families being able to develop recipes that they serve in their home, and then to test those recipes with their children. And their children being able to see what their families created being in the lunch line. Again, part of phase two is giving the money so the district doesn't have any excuses. So there's extra money and resources to make it happen. Secondly, we really need 20 minutes. And it's gotta be from when the students sit down, not when they start in line. 20 minutes. The great thing about that, too, is that then our educators actually get time to use the bathroom and do what they need to do and eat their own lunch. So students get enough time to eat, and our educators get to recharge their time.
So I will be very quick. I didn't say much of my story. My wife is an educator. She's a teacher at Great Middle School. Way back, I hate to say how many years, several decades ago, when she got her first job, we were living in Riverton, Wyoming, on the Rappamunchashon Indian Reservation with some very serious health care and food issues. We learned very, very quickly that if children show up and haven't had a breakfast, and they don't have lunch, they're not learning, which is a problem why our test scores are so low. Secondly, I will say I was one of 10 children. I know what it is to eat very quickly because if you want to eat it all, you're eating quickly. That being said, I am a doctor. I'm not a medical doctor. I want that to be clear. I'm a social psychologist, which means I understand the interaction that happens between people and how much that means. Eating food in a meal situation is much more than just putting food in your mouth. It's about the education that's learned as you share with your friends as you interact and build relationships with each other. For that alone, we need to allow our students enough time.
Thank you for your responses. We're gonna move on to questions three and four.
If elected, will you support the CCG proposal of giving all the transparency process for free?
Sound okay? Yes. That's all right. Thank you. Kenworthy?
Yes.
Good for you? Yes. That's for you?
Probably no easier way to say yes.
Okay, this year, we are piloting Healthy School Meals in Edgewater. This pilot features cultural family recipes made from scratch, with local ingredients in school cafeterias. If selected, will you work with the CCG to expand the Healthy School Meals pilot program into three additional articulation areas?
Sound okay? Yes. Kenworthy?
Yes.
Yeah. Yes.
All right, you have 60 seconds to respond.
All right, I've got the questions here, so I keep going back. Thank you for coming on the screen, too. So the Jeffco is fascinating to me because I noticed on my son's account, who's a 3rd grader, that the account ran out of money last week. And I'm like, what are you buying? They heard the story. And it kind of gets real cheapish. She's like, well, they have these chocolate cookies that they sell there. And I was shocked. I had no idea that every day after his lunch, he was buying a chocolate cookie. No idea. And I never would have known except that the money ran out. I'm gonna ask for more. So I think this is absolutely something that, as a district, we have to look at. You know, I'm also a big believer in that we should pay our food workers and our kitchen workers the wage they deserve, and it should be based on incentives for food, healthy or not. I mean, healthy food, yes, but they should be paid that wage no matter what. And so I really look forward to working with JESPA, CCG, and really diving into this one. And the next one, sorry. I'm used to one question. So I'm really excited. So, um, I'm really excited with this pilot. Um, in my own career, I'm an engineer as well. Um, if the engineers together this time, ah, yeah. I live to school all week, expand it.
So selling junk food at school is bad enough, but incentivizing, uh, it seems criminal. So as I said before, we have an abuse problem. It's an epidemic. It's more than tripled in the last 50 years. I also know in high school, I was eating a lot of cookies and ice cream because I could, so I, I don't love that for my own shoulders. And then as far as the cultural recipe, recipes, I think that's amazing. Um, one of the things that we do at home is we spin the globe, we pick a country, and we make that meal, and we learn about that country. And so I would challenge you to maybe expand it and, and make it a learning experience. But it involves.
So I'm willing to work with Jespa and CCG and our district's very staff to look at alternative options for selling foods with low nutritional value in our schools. And support students having access to a variety of high-quality food options so they can practice making choices based on their dietary and nutritional needs. And also, I love the idea and intention of a pilot program that's currently in place, and I'm excited about the possibilities of expanding into other articulation areas. One of the things Michelle and I wanna work on is expanding career pathways. And I think that when we work with our local farms, um, especially those in more urban areas who do teach our kids where their food's coming from and how it gets to their table. Um, and so there's opportunity to have core competency lessons connected to the growing and the receiving and providing a healthy and culturally diverse foods in our everyday diet at school and at home.
So with the extra money coming from the state for the Healthy School Meals, there shouldn't be the need to make money through selling junk food. I don't know why that would continue. On the second one, I love the Healthy School Meals pilot in Edgewater. The best part of it was when the district posted that on Facebook, all the suburban areas were like, when do we get this? Because if you know anything about our area, it's the suburban area that gets things, and we don't get things. So to have them wanting what we have felt really darn good. So I'm committed to scaling this up, but being clear that the three articulation areas are Alameda, Wheat Ridge, and Urbata. We look at the students that face more hurdles, and the best resources go to them, and we flip the inequity that's existed for too long. So these two are very easy to say yes, absolutely yes, too. I just wanna talk about how they come about. So I love that we finally in this school did something positive and did a pilot that actually is beneficial for our students. So, oh, I do have a question. Can you invite me to that meal? If we do that, can, can I come? Please let me know, because I will be there absolutely. One of the core tenets of why I'm running is exactly this. That's why I was so touched i- in, at the beginning. And seeing pilots work and people standing up and saying, it does not feel good for me to incentivize students to do something that is not good for them. Open, transparent communication driven by our main stakeholders. And those main stakeholders are parents, teachers, workers, cafeteria, paras. They know what's going on every day, so much more than I. So the answer is very easy, yes. But more than that, I need your input. Should you like me to the board? All right, thank you. Now on to questions five and four. Or, sorry, five and six. You go backwards.
Again, hello, I'm Aileen Mullmeyer. I'm a para educator again. All right, here we go. Hi, hello again. I'm Aileen Mullmeyer, and I am a para educator for Urbata West. Um, I'm gonna present question five and six to you. So a severe staffing shortage is affecting students who need the services of ESPs, especially those most vulnerable students, and has led to outsourcing of those services. If elected, will you support the CCG proposal to increase wages for paraeducators and other education support professional staff who directly serve our students?
And is that okay?
Yes.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Good for you. Yes. That's right. Yes.
Question six. Will you commit to working with CCG leaders, including leaders on Jespa and CEAA, the J, oh, sorry, the JCEAA, to develop a plan to end outsourcing in the district by the end of 2025 school year? Would they focus on ending contracts with the hot skip drive and other transportation companies as well as contracted paraeducators?
Is that, uh, sorry, is that okay?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Good for you. Yes. Good for you. Yes. All right, 60 more seconds.
So staff shortages are absolutely affecting our students through the Urbata Valley, and I am passionate about making sure that not only our, our paraeducators and our educational support professional staff getting the wages they deserve, but also our educators. Um, we have to focus on hiring and retaining high-quality staff and educators, or else our district is in trouble. This has to be a priority for us. And I really look forward to working with CCG and Jespa and JCEAA because I do believe that we want our employees to be district employees. There is training, there is connection, there is a passion. And I appreciate the message from our friend as our bus driver because my angel loves his bus driver. And it makes all the difference in the world. Um, and it is one of those things that it makes me feel good as a mom that I know he's getting a safe ride to me from the school. So absolutely, this is something that has to be prioritized by the district. When we started this year, we had a huge amount of shortages and openings, which is really scary as a parent, and it should be scary from a D O E direction, it's like, too.
So, um, I had the pleasure of talking to Trevor's wife earlier this week, Lonnie, and she explained to me a lot of what's going on. And so I think it's, um, it, it's horrifying, really, that, that the, um, drivers are vetted and not, um, not prepared for a potential emergency. It seems like that's an accident waiting to happen. As, as well as, you know, the salaries have to come from somewhere, so I don't take it lightly. Um, but we have a big budget, and I have no doubt that there are places that we can cut. Um, as I mentioned, I'm a business owner. I have a $1 million budget, $1.4 billion. And I'm pretty sure there are monies that are being allocated to either capital improvement costs or, um, other sources that, that they're just, say, maybe a pool, um, that could be, could be utilized for, for this purpose. So I know that it, um, we have to do hard work, but it most certainly should, should be a priority, so, um. We also, the other part of, uh, probability.
So I'm gonna say somebody who worked in school, we all know, people who wield the power, the custodians, the school secretaries, and we also know that the people who know what's going on are the para professionals and the, um, support staff in the school buildings. That's absolutely true. As a educator and a teacher, it's hard to be, can't get anything done without having their ESPs, um, in the building and being supported also. Um, so I do support exploring ways we can increase wages for our ESPs, paraeducators, like my neighbor Jen, who's a para. Um, while our budget is complicated, we must prioritize attracting and retaining ESPs who are working with students in our schools. It's, it's a par. The other answer is that, um, I commit to working with a variety of stakeholders, including Jespa, CCG, and JCEA, to build an infrastructure that serves our student community in just the least possible ways. And I'm committed, committed to doing the work to understand and broaden the size and scope of district outsourcing. I don't have a whole picture yet, but I will. Why it's needed and to what period is necessary. Um, it's hard to commit to ending on a specific date, but I do commit to working on a sustainable, unstable plan. And I will last for a long time.
When we moved to Edgewater, my wife worked as a para professional at Lumberry Elementary. We definitely need to raise the wages of all education support professionals, and especially with para professionals. We need to take things off their plate. Those of you that are paras know that you're like the catchall for everything in schools. And I think you need to be paid more, and you need to have a specific job description that everything doesn't fit into other duties assigned. That's not fair to you as professionals. The second thing with transportation, we do need to get rid of contracting that out. The school experience is not just when you walk in the school door. It's from the door of the home to the door of the school. And we need to make sure we have trained, wealthy professionals that are doing that. That the district has oversight of, and that that's not outsourced to companies that are just looking to make money. Yeah. So to me, this is a matter of honor and trust. There is something that happens when you walk onto, at eight, six, that whenever you show up at your job or at your bus driver, and you feel like you made a difference that day. That is what every employee deserves. Uh, and that's how I run my school. When I took over, uh, we were not delivering the promise of education. We had a trust problem. I get the sense from here, from the questions alone, that the groups here that were mentioned earlier have a significant trust problem with the district. That is number one, underline my first priority if I'm elected. Let me give you just a quick example. At, at my college, we have always had a hired, uh, security guard. Uh, I did not like that because that was someone that, uh, someone sent to me to work. So I convinced my senior high-level folks hired me that I wanted to hire this person. And I hired Ayesha Mack, who is a member of the Concord family and one of us. That's what it means to me.
All right, thank you. I just had a couple clarifying questions on that round. Um, so yeah, trust is an issue, of course, but we're looking for more money. So I think that's definitely a priority. So, um, saying yes to that question would be definitely about increasing wages. Absolutely, okay. The other question, so, Ken, where you said not, I, I think you kinda were a little unsure of the date. So when we were working on these questions, um, this is our plan. So I think, I, I'm just curious, is it a yes on the, the date of 2025, or is it a no?
That's another question, absolutely.
Wanna make sure the interpretations are, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I'm gonna say to make the last change in an institution the size of Jeffco that I don't think that it is, um, entirely possible, especially given the deficits that we have in our support staff and our bus driving force. Um, and so I wanna be realistic and not overpromise things that I cannot deliver. And I wouldn't be able to deliver that solely anyway. That's work that comes from five people on the board and the district superintendent. So while I sup, I support absolutely making these changes and reducing, um, having contractors, I wanna be realistic about how long that'll take because of the deficits that we have in our, um, staff numbers.
Okay.
So is it a yes or a no?
It depends.
Depends. I'm gonna, I'm gonna think, I, I think if you're unwilling to commit to nine, we're gonna say yes or no.
Yeah, I'm not gonna promise things that I cannot deliver.
Okay. So I have one final question. I think I sent this to all of you already, um, that I wanted to ask. So will you commit to meeting with CCG within 60 days of being elected to office?
Yes. Working with CCG.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. So I, okay, you will now have 60 seconds for closing statements. Let's go backwards. That's only fair. And I know about fair, so, um, that's where we began. And let me say something that I did not say at the beginning. I professionally, for my work, I'm president of the college, I am hired to fix broken colleges that aren't delivering the promise of education. I have that experience. So these questions about doing that, maybe in 60 days, that's, that's easy. Fixing something by 2025, while we are members of a five-member board, uh, and we can't control, obviously, the other four members, we can absolutely pursue and push that by a deadline. We are in a place where we do not have time to do things like we've done in the past. We inherited a decade of poor decisions, clumsy decisions, mistakes. And I am committed to fixing that if I'm elected. So I would ask you to learn more about me in a minute with yes or no answers. If you don't have all kinds of time, please visit Team Wiki. That's W I C K, W I C K E dot com. That is my website where you can learn a whole lot more about me and contact me. I would be honored to receive your vote. So again, Joel Newton, running for District Board. One thing I do have and one thing I don't have, one thing I do have after working with the district, with our organization of Edgewater Collective for the last 10 years, is experience. So I've worked with six different superintendents under some, let's just say, fine circumstances. But I know how things get done in the district, and I wanna put that experience to use for those who need it most, both staff, students, and families. One thing I don't have is patience. I have seen things done at the board table very quickly. I don't have patience for what needs to be done well. We do face big challenges in the district with money, but our students, our families, our educators, or professionals deserve it now. So I have experience, but I don't have patience because we need to do better for all our stakeholders.
When I said to run for this, I committed to myself to run with integrity. That means I will do what I say I'm going to do. It's not going to overpromise things that can't be delivered like so many politicians do. That's one of the things that leads to a lack of trust between leadership and the people who are serving our institutions. Um, so I wanna lift up that I'm a collaborative leader. Um, I'm purely thoroughly honest in my intentions of following through on what I said I'm going, I'm going to do. I'm transparent in my process, collaborative, and inclusive of perspectives different than my own. I don't focus on strength and solution-based efforts to face our challenges together. I'm here to work with you, not over or above you, to lift up what is working and feed those efforts. And I look forward to your support and working alongside you to support Jeffco students across the entire county. Uh, if you'd like to get involved with Michelle and I in these last weeks, you can go to www.fourjeffcostudents.com. So thank you for your time and consideration this evening.
So if you haven't already, you will likely receive a mailer in, um, in the mail about the three candidates that are not endorsed by the union. I, I just have to say, please do your homework on us. There's some lies in there, and I, I'm here to tell you. There's some lies in there and I'm here to tell you, this is an amazing group of people. I love that there's this much support. We have not been in front of this many people. So I applaud you for caring so much. I'm here today because I care. And I care about logical solutions. I care about providing every child an opportunity to thrive, and that starts in school. Okay, so I want, I want the chance to earn your vote and I would very much encourage you to look into us and the lies that are being expounced throughout the comments here. So I'm at Ameri4JepcoKids, that's A-M-A-R-A, number four, jepcokids.com. And I'm also running for district four.
I want to thank everyone again tonight. This was an amazing turnout and it's been a really, a really great evening. My career as an engineer, and then in public policy, and then a decade volunteering in the classroom, and six years combined as a JCEA president. I've learned a lot about bringing people together and listening with open ears and then trying to work together to build collaborative behaviors. I'm passionate about public education and I really believe that as a community that can come together, we can lift each other up and really do some incredible things. Erin and I are supported by JCEA, she gave you our website. But I agree, do the research. We've all gotten to do this together for quite a few times, but I hope what you see is a group that really do care. Thank you.
Okay, thank you candidates for coming tonight. We appreciate being able to hear from you. Thank you for listening to us.
We are not in this room to tell you how to vote, but rather to have had to learn and hear and digest through a street. I'm proposing two steps. The first step involves this piece of paper. On the back, you marked a chart and maybe you marked it too. And we want you to take what you have learned and share it with everyone you know. The second part of step one is on the bottom of the agenda, there is a next step for you and we'd like you to fill that out and please return it at the door. Step two, if your institution is not a part of Colorado's for the common good, we want to talk to you. So please come see us, any of us would love to talk to you. This is not an end, but a beginning. Help us build democracy. Help us build Colorado's for the common good. And help us build our community for the betterment of our tomorrow. Thank you. I now invite Pastor Liz Ince from We Reach Presbyterian Church to close us in a blessing over our shared humanity and our hearts that give.
I am here not only as a pastor, but I am here as the son of a Jepco public school teacher who taught in the district for over thirty years. Over four ways to Jepco schools. And then my, my three kids are Jepco graduates. And I know we're not supposed to be partisan here, but I'm going to say that We Reach Farmers are outstanding. And my brother was actually a schoolwork candidate at one time. I will not tell you who he was, you'll have to do your own research. So thank you all for being here. Thank you for the effort that you all put in. This is, it's hard work.
And one more shout out to Outdoor Lab. When my kid, my son's life was transformed. We have a lot going on in our world tonight. So I invite you into a time of prayer, whatever that might be for you, whatever background you bring, it's all safe and acceptable here. But let us take time to give praise. Creator and educator God and giver of all good things, as our time draws to a close tonight, we give you thanks for opportunities to discuss and learn and reflect on our commitments to education and our children. Bless all those who invest time and energy and their own money into educating our children and our young adults and thus inspiring our commitment to freedom and democracy. We thank you for those who have participated this evening and for those who made this night possible. As we leave this place, we ask that you be close to all those who will work through the night. And may you give us rest and sleep that we might wake refreshed and prepared for another day. These things and so many other prayers we lift to you with the sincerity of hearts. Amen.
Okay, I would like to say that we need an hour. If you had a little, if you asked any questions, if you spoke all the stories, please come up to the stage, we're going to do a little debriefing.